We'll call orders, um, regular reading.
I'm gonna go see if anyone signed up for public comments.
Okay, public comments and then also do we have the attorney on the line ready?
We'll get him, we, we'll go in, we'll proceed to get him as we're entering the room since it'd be closed session. Do we have any comments?
No. Um, no, no public forum, so we would run a move to, I did not look at these numbers before I started talking. Five five one, we're running a closed session or five five one oh seven for attorney consultation, five five one oh seven four for personnel. No, uh, we'll go to four which is consent agenda.
Mr. Powell, do you have your microphone on?
No.
You know, to do that.
Okay, we'll move to item number four which is consideration of the consent agenda. I didn't see, no, anybody have any questions or pull anything out? If not, then entertain a motion. Motion by Penning, second by Redd, uh, doesn't favor raise your hand. Especially here's six oh, move to item number five, campus administrative reports.
Okay, so Lindsay and I are gonna pass out two things that I'm gonna talk about, that Mr. Fowler and I are gonna talk about. One of them are the, um, the progress monitoring, it's a progress monitoring report for the board goals. Um, so, and then there's that all referenced.
And then the star online interim data.
Yes, and then the second one she's got is the TEA online interim benchmark. Alright, so, we were supposed to present this last month, um, but here it is because of everything going on. But the first one is the board out, the board outcome goal, um, that we, one of the things that we're gonna monitor. Um, so there it was, beginning of the year and middle of the year, notice it dropped two percentage points. We've talked with the teachers and we've all kinda decided that there's something going on there. They have all talked about how when they are, what it is, it has a bunch of nonsense words and they flash up on the screen. And as the kids are saying it, the teacher is coding it on the keyboard. And the teachers have said that when they're coding it, they can't do it fast enough or they miss it or they miss a step and by then it's gone to the next word and even the next word. So, um, I, we tried something with, um, Ms. Ferguson's second grade class and we noticed that she had had a big drop off there, like they just kinda fallen off. And so we were talking and I said, you know, let's do this, let's go ahead and test, give them, um, a test, you know, different form, but we'll do it on paper and see if they do any better, it's easier to score for you, that way you don't get behind, because yeah, because by that time I can't go back and fix anything. So we had done it on paper and, um, just her class alone, I think it went from, um, 24 kids who failed that part of the assessment in second grade, so when we redid it on paper, it only ended up being 11 and it was barely so. We're like, okay, so the next time we do it, we're gonna do it on paper. So at the end of the year, just that one section of the in-class assessment, we're gonna do it on paper. Um, seems to be easier for the teachers to score and they don't get behind on it and mess up the scoring, so that's what we're looking at. We didn't redo it for, um, kinder and first, we just wanted to see, um, if we redid it, what would happen. And that's what happened with second grade, so we're assuming the rest of them are like that too.
So we're gonna do all paper for the next?
Just on the nonsense word fluency assessment. So there's, there's like several different assessments in there, everything's fine except for this one section that's hard to score with the keyboard. Um, so we'll do that part on paper and then enter in the scores manually.
But of the other two grade levels, you're gonna do it on the drawing screen.
And the other sections don't have that similar kind of scoring, you have to do it fast, fast, fast?
No, not, well, it is, but it's easier to score with the, the teachers, for the teachers, easier to score on the keyboard. This one was hard because you had to mark each thing, each sound that they got, plus if they got the whole word and by that time two more words have flashed up. So, 'cause I did it myself and I'm thinking, oh my gosh. So, we expect that to go up. Um, so the second monitoring goal was those reading on level, um, we're staying even at 81%. I believe our goal for June is 83%, so hoping to get there. Um, reading readiness for pre-K, our goal was 93%, we've met it at 95, so we're happy about that. Yeah, and then I, we wanted to show you where we stood on the yearly overall goal, um, which was, the big goal was third grade reading, um, students that score meets grade level or above. Um, and so that's not just passing or above, that's that next step up, meets and above. So, the students that meet or above, we wanted 51% for June and we've met that with 62% meets. So we're really kind of felt the growth there. And that was the interim benchmark that they took online that TEA provides. Where it gives, um, TA looks at their scores and it gives them like a, um, like a probability rating, like if they continue on this path, this is their chance of passing, kind of thing.
Did you find any chance to have the total test?
Yes, yeah.
Somewhere on here?
Yes, it's gonna be on that separate handout, it's got all the, um, scores on it.
On this one?
Yes, and so I'll talk about that in a second. Um, so progress monitoring report for goal two is math, the third grade students' math score meets grade level on star or above. And so the first thing that we did a progress measure was look at algebraic reasoning, it was one of our weaker areas. Um, so K through two, we set a goal at 75%, um, approaches or above and K through two met that middle of the year with 86%. Um, our goal for numbers and operations was 58% for June and we're at 89%. And then pre-K, set a goal for 93%, we're at 95. And then down here, um, for the update on the yearly overall goal for third grade math, we took their interim scores for meets and above, so again, that's not, that's not the passing and above, it's that next, it's a higher ranking. Set a goal at 73 for June and right now we're sitting at 32%, 11%, 12%, 32% now. So we're working hard to meet there, we know that, you know, if she, that our teachers are having to fill in a lot of gaps, we're missing, um, so much school last spring, um, and math, you know, they're missing those building blocks and so having to reteach the building blocks to then teach, um, the, the grade level teaks, yes, and then make sure it's all star rigor, so we're trending in the right direction there. And then I'll wait, I'll wait for y'all to get this. Do you have another one of the benchmark papers? Oh, thank you. Alright, and so this year, um, our benchmarks were done, um, online. It's the same platform that the, the kids are gonna use on the STAR test. We figured as much exposure as they can get to that online format, the better. So how TEA does this, um, they, they'll give you a percentage of those projected to pass and after talking to people on there, they said go ahead and use that percentage are projected to pass because if they, uh, were off by one question, then, then it counts for them being projected to pass. So that's where we sit with math in each of those areas, um, in that first box. And then where we sit with reading in that second box. So, any questions?
I'm not sure about in-class, I asked for the, the total, you know, scores.
Of the composite ones? Oh, yes, so on the first page, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. On the first page, underneath campus updates, um, it has those composite scores for middle of the year, which is the total of the, of all those subtests in that assessment, all figured in together.
It says campus update?
Yes, on the bottom, on the bottom of the first page.
Kind of, okay, it's kind of like right here where there's no, this down here is not in-class, right?
No, the one above.
That's in-class, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
No, the bottom one is from the interim data.
So it's not broken down by grade?
Not on this one, this, no, yeah. Just this one is, um, based on what the actual goals were.
How, I mean, how difficult would it be for the next time that we do this goal to give that five grade?
Yeah, I can do it on a separate handout like this, separate from this.
I'm not, I don't think it's necessary to do it this time, just next time we do this goal.
Yeah, I can do it by dropping it next time. Anything else? Oh, I wanted, I did wanna update y'all. Um, since the middle of the year assessments, we have access to a free program that goes along with in-class. It's called Amplify Reading and, uh, it's for our K-2 students. And it is a, they take their in-class scores and how they did in each area and it's an online learning program, so they get in there and it's set to their level, it works on their weakest areas. Um, so it's prescriptive, it's differentiated for each kid, whether they were above level or well below. Um, and we've seen, we've seen some good things with that too. The kids really enjoy it and I think this is the first time that we've had something exactly like that for our younger grades. So, um, right after they took that second, um, uh, assessment, they started doing their online, um, reading program. And they do it 45 minutes a week and about 15 minute increments, so they really like it. And again, that's free, provided by the state this year.
Thank you, Ms. Seduce.
Okay, I'm gonna go over the board outcome goal for goal three, the CCMR goal, um, just kinda show you where we are. So, um, Krista and I were coming up with these, we were trying to do like a one-page that was just easy, whoop, easy to read. And so we did the color coding at the top, it just showed, like her first one, the green one shows, you know, that it was on track. And then if they're yellow, they're progressing, so you can tell we're improving, we're just not right exactly where we need to be at this time. So, it's kinda where we are with goal three. Now, let y'all know, just remember from all the taper stuff, my stuff drops in about two years behind. So some of it, we track it the best we can, um, especially for this progress measure two, the TSI criteria. Sometimes those kids will go to college, they don't think they're gonna go to college, so they don't take it here, but when they go to enroll in BLEN, they require them to take the TSI. So then it would come and count for us later on that five-year drop in rate. So some of those things, there's a chance when the tapers pulled that it's higher, but we don't always get that data. So there's, some of this stuff is a little bit out of our control of that. Um, so we just control the things we can. So for the industry-based certifications, just to let y'all know, the certifications are in progress, they should be completed by this May. We have 11 students currently working, um, to complete their OSHA 30-hour general certification, which is on the state approved list. So if they all complete that successfully, then that would jump us up to 35% earning those industry-based certifications. The goal that we had for this year was 12%, so we kinda broke that down here. We went ahead and put the big goal at top and then we put each of those measures and then specified which, for this year, what we had set. Um, and then for the measure two, we're at 19%, so we started out the year with zero. Once I gave the SAT, we had some of those kids that met that, um, that math score. A lot of them had met the reading because they'd done TSI and earned dual credit, but they have to earn both for it to count. So, once we had that SAT, we got about 19% there. And then we will give some, um, we will give the TSI, um, to some of our seniors that knows that they're gonna go to BLEN and some two-year institutions, so hopefully we'll catch some more of them there as well. Um, at the very bottom, you can see the update on the yearly goal, so we are at 48%. Our goal is 71. And then I put kind of up here at the top, but if all of those, those 11 students complete theirs, we will jump up to 66%. So that'll get us closer to our goal. Some of the things in the campus update that we're doing, so we're currently working on those industry-based certifications. We also just administered our SAT to juniors, so that'll help us for next year. I had 25, so that was a record high for us. We'll see how those scores come out in, in about a month. We will administer the new, so one other thing to say is, um, the TSI, as we knew it, is changing. So I will give the TSI a two, which is the first time, and we're not sure really what those cutoff scores are gonna look like yet. Um, they've combined the reading and writing into one test, so we're afraid that's gonna change some of our dual credit stuff because they used to say for our sophomores to take it, all they had to pass was reading. And the writing on it is very rigorous, and so we're just trying to see how many of those freshman and level will be able to take that and pass to get into the dual credit this year. So we're hoping that doesn't hurt what we had created by the state redesigning that test on us. So we'll do that for, um, all the seniors before they go off to their junior colleges. And then we're also looking at adding, in discussing with, um, Ms. Leroy, some of our math scores just overall have been low. When you pull up the TSI, the math, like our reading last year was like, um, 76% of them that took the TSI passed the reading, but only 38% passed the math. So of course the 38 is only the count, only the ones that count because it has to get, they have to get both of them. So trying to improve that, we talked about adding that at the end of Algebra II, that every Algebra II student at the end of the year would take the TSI. Because that's the math, it's, a lot of our kids have taken pre-K and other things and by the time they get back to it, it's kind of hard to track back to it, so. Those are things we're looking at doing to try to help improve that math goal. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
You're welcome.
So I'll go over the secondary TEA online midterm, midterm. We just have the, uh, the 10 different subjects there, Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, US History. That's all off the secondary campus. Um, if you compare those scores, those scores are, um, do not always include all the information that the students will be, um, will be taking on the EOCs. Um, so when we compare these to what the STAR scores are, or what the state standard was last time it was taken, everybody is right at it. The only things that were close were just ones that had some information, um, some of that kind of COVID slide from last year that they didn't receive a lot of the information at the end of their, uh, at the end of the year that teachers had to go back and reteach old content and, and are trying to catch up. Um, the junior high campus is really doing well too. A lot of those subjects are building block subjects as well. A lot of your math and sciences build on previous subjects, so though we are doing well in those areas, um, compared to what the overall score should be at the end, um, some of those group, those scores are only gonna come up once they have received all the information um, that they will be taking for the STAR test. So, um, this is very encouraging, the kids are doing really well, um, our teachers are rocking it. Um, a lot of these scores are right at what the state average is at the time of taking STAR and at the time of taking EOC. And so this was in February when we took this?
End of February, some of the first one.
End of February, starting in March, so, um, they still have several months to reteach and go back over this. And so this has been really good data for our teachers. Um, the, uh, the website that we use breaks all the questions down, lets them know what teaks most, most students missed. So it's, it's great for planning, a great tool for helping these teachers to go back and reteach and get all the extra data. Does anybody have any questions?
I just wanna add one thing, and, and we say this every year, I see it's in this report, with eighth, eighth grade math and masters is 0%. Guys, please understand, the higher performing eighth grade stu, students, they're not in eighth grade in math, they're in Algebra I. So each year, Mr. Glass does a bang-up job with his kids, but his higher performing kids aren't taking the eighth grade math test, they're taking the, the Algebra I test. So again, we say that every year, that's my annual disclaimer.
So these are like practice tests that are online that you can go?
Uh, the system is online because that's kinda how we're gonna take our STAR tests this year. Um, and so it helps kinda break that down, that for us, but it, it's just the regular interim, it's kind of like a STAR test.
It looks, it looks almost like, yeah, it's identical.
It's the closest thing to what they're gonna see on the STAR test. Most of them had about 25, 30 questions. It was divided, it, one thing is, is interesting is because I guess it was the predictive nature of the test, it's divided into sections, so they would complete a section and then based on how they did it, it would reroute into another section. But some, that gave us, the, the teachers a lot more data to know if they were on the high track, the medium track, the low track.
As y'all were putting these, uh, reports together, was, was there information that you were collecting that you had not been looking at in the past? I mean, I just wanna know if the process that this made us go through of putting these goals together is helpful to you and the teachers?
Yes, it's very helpful. Um, it's just like PLC kind of information, helps you kind of see where you're going, where you're, where you're coming from, where you're going, what areas are kind of weak, so it gives you different colors, um, red, blue.
Purple.
Yeah, and then tells you, green is like kind of the colors that, um, you know, you're doing well on and the other colors show you where you need work on, so it's very helpful.
The teachers are using that data for their online stuff to say, okay, you know, what question did they most, did my class mostly miss? And then they look and see why, they'll add questions like that in their daily teaching and then they'll say, okay, well, most of my kids missed this, but I have already covered it, so now I'm gonna go back to a whole group lesson, reteach it a different way, so they.
Well, let's not go and tell Ben Lamond that they did a good job up there.
Superintendent report, I just have one thing, uh, community and board members just be on the lookout for the March District Newsletter to be published very soon. Uh, I've been holding on to it because we had Kinder first grade rodeo at the elementary last Friday. I wanna make sure that's in the newsletter. Uh, we had our state championship ring ceremony, uh, last night, was an amazing event and thank you again, Ms. Harvey, for allowing us to use your facilities. I wanna make sure that's in the newsletter. And then we have junior high district track meet going on as we speak, so I'd like to have those results in the newsletter as well. Um, so again, this will go out, um, it might be April 1st instead of March 31st, but be on the lookout for it to come out this week, and that's all I have for the superintendent's report.
He's afraid he missed his report.
I didn't, I didn't know that was my report time.
I just have so many great things. I am so sorry, I.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, okay. So I just wanted to come back and just comment, sorry. Um, so our softball team, um, right now, um, they're two and six, but they're doing really great, they're doing a bang-up job. Uh, those girls are fighting so hard, they're scrapping for everything and they're really kind of coming along. They're just on the verge of really kind of doing great things. Uh, their next game is on Tuesday, um, versus North Zulch. Our boys are looking great, uh, Coach Tran is doing an excellent job with them. Right now they're four and 11, um, if you don't look at the score, they're just, they really look great. He's really kind of turning that program around, they're really good looking, um, the team has a lot of character, he's really building great men out there. Um, their next game is at Burton tomorrow as well. Uh, track and field, um, girls won the Snook meet, um, and then the girls got second place in our Iowa meet, so they're doing fantastic. Um, boys got second in the Snook meet and then I guess the district meet is April 7th at Snook, so, um, we expect good things from them. Uh, our junior high boys are doing a great job, they won the Snook Invitational and they finished their meet tonight at Normandy. One of the big things that I really wanna talk about, um, our finance, our fine arts program. Um, we've really come a long ways in our fine arts program and I'm really excited about that, something that I've really been working hard for and at this year. Um, band has their spring concert on May 4th, um, then they have their band banquet on April 29th, so they've gotten those, uh, set up. Um, theater, they will be doing the Wizard of Oz play, um, in our theater class. Um, so that'll be really exciting if she's got a good group of kids, all the way from I think 7 to 12, so it's gonna be, um, a good mix of kids. We have a tournament that's gonna be May 14th or May 15th, but in that area. Um, and then the other exciting thing that we're doing new this year, so in correlation with the spring band concert, we're gonna have an art gallery. So, um, Mrs. Glass has put together all the wonderful art we, artwork that our kids have put together this year. She's gonna have an art gallery, okay? So, starting on 5:30 on May the 4th, um, we will, before the band concert, we'll have in the cafeteria, all the students' artwork that they have done this year. So, it's kind of a fundraiser, I guess, in a sense, for her, for her club. What she's gonna do, she's actually gonna have prints of all the kids' work that you can buy so that, um, you know, certain kids, I mean, some of that work is really amazing. Um, it's just, she's really, you know, pulled some of that, some, you know, great stuff out from those kids, so. It's really an exciting thing, it's gonna be kind of like the arts night of Iowa, so it kinda crosses over with the band concert and then after the band concert, you can go, um, back to the, uh, the art gallery. So, we're really excited about that, she's been a lot of, she's put a lot of artwork into that. Um, and so that's gonna be something new, so I just, I really wanna make sure you guys knew that. We've got two people's artwork being put into the primary primavera on April 9th, it's in Bryan, it's an actual art gallery. Um, so Blake Blanchard and Bethany Futro will be having their artwork put into that and I guess it'll be, um, somehow ranked or something, so it's an actual contest of some sort. Um, and then there's the actual George Bush Library Competition and we have six students in that exhibit. So, uh, Ms. Glass is doing some awesome stuff in that art class. Alright, we've got lots of awards, I really don't wanna miss them all, but I really wanted to kinda announce them. Bailey Morgan, she just signed our first Cheer Scholarship, I believe ever, in Iowa and so she'll be going to ETBU, I don't know why I just forget that all the time. Jenna McGugl, um, she did really great at the Houston, um, Fair, she got first place in class and then she got sixth place in class in Austin, so that, it was a great, um, accomplishment. Lexi Wheaton, um, got the KBTX, I mean, sorry, Lacy Wheaton, got KBTX Classroom Champion, um, this last week. Um, that was really amazing. Ms. Testin, she's gonna be doing a, um, enrichment revamping of our library through her Honors II English class. So she's got the kids really excited about just revamping that whole library. Uh, we've got, uh, some resources, some things that, you know, we're able to get new books and stuff and she's really excited about kind of doing some things in the library, um, and they're really excited about that. We've got a lot of, um, our, our UIL Lone Star Cup, um, we are number 14 right now in the state. So Lone Star Cup is all the points that we get from all of our UIL athletic events. Um, so we were, I think, in the top five, top seven at the start of the spring, but we've kinda dropped a little bit, but we're still beating Leal, we're still beating Beckville, so we got that. Um, should've talked about the SAT, the testing calendar's been released. Um, our Cheer Squad, um, just had, um, all of its, uh, just had all the tryouts. We have two new captains, um, Chaney Kay and Tatum Mavory, so they will be our new captains. And then we have all of our team results and team awards, but that'll take forever to go through them all, so. Um, volleyball did great, they had all their awards ceremony and our UIL did really good. Um, academic UIL did really good too, so, anyway, a lot of great things.
Is that a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the volleyball ring?
Yes, ma'am, I did wear it, I only wore it one time ever because I was scared to bang it up, but I had to wear it today.
I'm trying to see it on, 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 you know, the girl pictures.
Here.
What your son did.
Yes.
They made sure.
Yeah, it's, it's really nice.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
It, it's cute. It's doing it most of their faces.
You could hurt somebody with that.
It's holding.
Oh, it has a ring on it. All the girls had their ring on their outfit.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, I'm sorry.
I am so sorry.
I almost skipped all that, that would've been a shame. So, Mr. Gutten?
Okay, we'll move to item number six, considerations, Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 116.
Um, so in the past, or not in the past, we received these, um, manual updates from Tasby. In the past, they were always called vantage points, uh, now they're gonna be called, um, oh, it changed names there. Yes, policy overviews, uh, just so be aware of that as, as they come to us in the future. Essentially what happens is Tasby sends some recommendations to us, to the district, to the school board about, uh, some language changes that they recommend take place in our policies, our local policies. And, uh, the board sees kind of a, um, a summary of those recommendations. Uh, for instance, update 116 talks about grievance process for at-will and non-Chapter 21 contract employees. It talks about wellness and health services, uh, how we respond to students that become ill, steps to take after accidents, uh, meds provided by parents, purchase of unassigned prescription medicines such as EpiPens and inhalers. And, uh, this one wrapped up with GKA and it, uh, was talking about, um, any adult or any person removed from an event or denied access to an event. from an event or denied access to an event shall have permission to address the board within 90 days of that. Those are the things that are contained in update 116. So what happens when the board approves that, we send Tasby notification that our board has approved those updates. And they go, they're actually the, the body that goes into our policies and updates them. So this is, this is, I go through all that detail because we have some new board members. In the past, I know we've gotten the updates and just approved them and moved on, but I wanted to be a little more detailed this time as to what it pertains to and what's actually in this, this particular update.
On the updates, well, anyway, it says the update December 11. So in policy, will it be 11 or will it be when we adopt it?
I don't think it will have a date in our actual policies. You know how you can go online and you pull up, for instance, this last one, what was it? I said GKA. When you pull it up, it doesn't have a date in there. It's just what it says at that minute.
But at the bottom, there's a date.
And then I'm not sure. I would have, I would guess that it would be the date that we have proven on.
I was wondering.
And I, I think the December date was when Tasby released these maybe.
Okay.
And we talked about this earlier, but you'll, you'll at least let us know when these have been updated.
Sure.
Just so we can see what they actually, what they actually did. Because some of these changes are, you know, moving things out of policy and into, into administrative handling. So if the administration is required to, you know, take certain steps, it would be for us to know exactly what they changed. Absolutely.
You're wanting to know when they're updated on the, on the system?
Right. The way it was explained to me is that we would not be the ones making the changes. So if Tasby is going to make those changes, it would behoove us to go back and see how they worded it.
We have to approve them anyway, right?
Yes.
Well, we have to approve these.
I think this is us approving it, right?
Yes. So the way the proposal reads is that I recommend that the board of trustees add, revise, or delete policies as recommended by Tasby according to instructions sheet for Tasby Policy Manual Update 116. So once you approve that, Tasby is actually the organization that goes in and adds, revises, and deletes. And so what Mr. Pointer is saying is that he would just like to know once Tasby has done that, the way these policies read after they've been added, revised, or deleted.
But usually at the bottom, it says updated. It didn't have the date. He was the policy.
Then yes, then if it says updated with the date, then that would be the date Tasby. I think so.
Motion by Tammy second. By Mr. Mallot, does any discussion? Does a favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, no. Item number seven, consideration of approval of Aula High School course catalog and course sequence for endorsement for 2021, 2022.
Ms. Harris, do you have anything to speak towards that?
Just to let you know that we did add, we're adding, we're changing a certification for welding with our coherent sequence. After talking to some people in the field, the welding certification we were doing was really not getting the kids the leg up that we'd hoped for. So they said they'd be OSHA 30-hour general because it's not just specific to welding. But if they want to enter any kind of construction field, that's the one that they require them to have. So that's the one we're working towards getting. And then also we are adding through Mr. Tran's business classes, we're going to add, next year will be the first time we're offering them to Business Information System 2. And with that, we're going to try to offer certification for Microsoft Office Word. He feels like that second level is the class that they will have the skills to do that. Now, if he does that this next year and decides to put it with our freshmen, that would be great. But he wants to see where those kids are in completing that certification. And we also wanted to add, we were talking with Nurse Elliot, trying to see if maybe she would think about teaching a introductory to nurse science class, starting that pathway if we can get some interest in that and try to offer the CNA by the time they leave. So we put it in here hoping that we can have the staff. But obviously, the, the course catalog sometimes are just what we're hoping. And then it also fills out that interest that the kids have. So when they register for the classes, we can see if we've got the interest to be able to try to fill that position.
Any other questions, Ford? Asked that the board approved the Aula ISD or the Aula High School course catalog and course sequence for endorsement for 21, 22?
Motion by Alec, got second. Any further discussion? Does a favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, oh. Item number eight, consideration of proving the TEA waiver for missed school days due to recent implement weather.
These will be the days we missed due to the snowbit or snowmageddon, as some people call it. We are not in a situation where we need these days waived, but we're going to go ahead and apply to TE, to TEA for these days to be waived in case we were to have something tragic happen before the end of the school year. We still have enough extra days to cover this. But since TA is offering it to every school in the state, we want to make sure we apply for it. So just ask the board to approve the TA waiver for missed school days.
So we won't get out of here, or we won't, the calendar won't change, although we get those days. We still, okay.
Motion by Tammy, second. I think it was Scott. Mask make it hard. Any discussion? Does a favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, oh. Where are we? Academic calendar, number nine.
Number nine. You guys have seen the calendar. Ms. Harris, do you have any information you want to share?
I think the explanation is actually on the page right behind it. Just kind of tells you the process that we go through and what we went through this year. And, you know, that the calendar was built, this is the one that the teachers have voted for unanimously, those that did vote. And then it goes to the district advisory committee from there. And then they review it and decide if this is what we want as the committee to take to the board for approval.
I think you see the calendars fairly similar to this year's with the exception of adding our PD or professional development or staff development days back in. The teachers need that professional development. And as you see from our assessment scores that were shared by the principals and direction we're headed, it seems like we're catching our kids up. If you remember, we did away with those PD days for this school year, trying to catch kids up, giving more instructional days and less staff development. And I think we're already at a point now that we can add those staff development back in and have our kids on track. So I just ask that the board approve the calendar for 21, 22 as presented.
Motion by Tammy, second. By Redd, open for discussion. Question, does a favor, raise your hand. And motion carries six, oh. Number 10, review of school health advisory council meetings.
Yes. In your board packet, I believe you got the minutes for the SHAC meetings we've had this year. There, we don't need any board approval on this this year. Annually, we would bring the new SHAC plan to you for board approval. We don't have any new items taking place through SHAC. We're just continuing the items that have been on our plan. So to bring it to the board is just to, for annual documentation that our, we're having our SHAC meetings and that we have presented to the board that there's nothing for your approval. The only issue we've had is we've talked about adding the bottle filler stations at the secondary. And whatever issue there was going on, it's been taken care of thanks to those two men right there, or maybe even Mr. Jordan, Mr. Fowler, and Ms. Harris. And they're both pointing to Mr. Jordan. So thank you, Mr. Jordan, for taking care of the issue with the bottle fillers at the secondary. So anyway, again, this is just document, annual documentation that SHAC is meeting our requirements. There's nothing that needs approval because our plan is continuing as it was, no new items. So we're on to number 12.
Number 11, discussion of setting times for workshops and call meetings.
I had a conversation with Mr. Pointer. I think that this conversation took place either late January or early February. And that's as we were trying to schedule our goals workshop that we just had last Wednesday, our budget workshop that we had at 6:00 tonight, and our regular meeting. And so just, he asked if, if we could put this on the agenda for the board to discuss this. So the floor is open for the board to discuss. And I'm here to do whatever the board wishes me to do in these situations.
Well, since, since I was the one that asked for it, it, it just seems like it's near impossible within a week or two to try to get all of us together where we need to get together. I would just, I, I would think that if before the beginning of the fiscal year in, in August, we just have a standing item where we say, these are the days that our meetings are going to be, make sure they're not scheduled at a holiday, reschedule them then, have stand, you know, we have standing once a quarter budget workshops that we know are going to be this, you know, right before the meeting or whatever we want to do. And then there's four or five workshops that we have to have. Just have them all on the calendar. Make sure that they're not in a holiday. And then just everybody has them a year in advance. And I just think it would behoove us because it's not going to get any easier.
I think that throughout the year, things come up, you know, which is what we have been addressing is, you know, whether it's a playoff game or whether it's, this last two years have been like COVID, but, you know, things are going to come up. You know, we used to have a standing of, what, the third Thursday or so of the month was the meeting or something, something like that. And things, have changed the last two years.
Wouldn't you be shocked?
I know, I know it's hard. And then even, you know, I, I, several people have talked about maybe even looking at moving the meeting to the second Monday instead of the third because the third is, seems it's fallen on a lot of holidays.
Problem with that is a lot of times these end of month reports, if it isn't going to have a calendar fall, you're going to, you're about to put up the, your staff getting certain things too. So I think it's why it's only coming on the third.
I think it'd be fair to move it to, to the second or something. I think we've moved, we're constantly moving our, our four dates, constantly moving them for some reason, because it's a holiday mostly. And so, you know, I think the second, third day of the month.
January, February holidays.
February is what?
January, February, the holidays we're moving for. So we moved those in August, like you say.
I'm just saying we're always, we're always changing our school board meeting dates for reasons, some reason, holidays or something are coming up.
And you think moving it to the second will fix that?
I do. I think it'll help.
For the past 10 plus years, used to, it was ad boosters was on the second Monday of the month.
Yeah, I mean.
That's when we would have to do it anyway, right, for the new year.
Well, and the other, the other issue is in, in years past, it was, if we, if we skipped, you know, December and January, it wasn't a big deal. But, you know, we've got this, these goals now that have the, the monitoring calendar. And if, if every month we skip, you know, is, is going to push that monitoring for one more goal to the next, to the next meeting. And, I mean, it's already going to be pretty late now. And, you know, we're, we're, it's going to snowball. So when we, when we don't have one meeting, now that we're going to have this formalized calendar, it's going to get a lot harder to have, to have meetings that, you know, don't get out at midnight. And there's no reason Iowa should have a meeting that long.
So what I'm hearing is just try to put all these dates on the calendar a year in advance, maybe bring them in August, July, August to present. So that way board members know months in advance. Okay.
And I mean, at that point, if one of us has a kid that's in volleyball or a playoff game, well, playoff game's a little different, but a reg, a regular game or something like that, we, you know, we're not trying to reschedule it. It's just, we just make a choice if we're going to be here or there, you know, and the meeting go on.
Okay. I will work on that for the board.
Okay. Number 12, consideration of authorizing superintendent to offer teacher employment contracts and professional extra duty assignments for the 2021, 2022 year, that's the school year from May 1, 2021 until September 20, 2021.
This was the same thing we did last year. We had this discussion as we approached the summer months. That's when most of our hiring takes place. If I don't have the authority, then we can't officially hire anyone without board approval. And sometimes you will miss some of your stronger teaching candidates. Whenever you tell them, we want to hire you, but our next meeting isn't two weeks away, three weeks away. And then another district matches them up. So this is, this is something that every district deals with. You guys granted me this authority last year. And that's why it's on here, to just try to make sure we can hire teachers in a timely manner during the hiring season.
Let's see, the third year we do this or the second year?
I want to say it's just, this is my third year superintendent. I want to say it's just the second. I don't think I had this authority my first year.
Have we ever, has the board ever not followed that recommendation?
Second year.
No, I, I mean, in the past, when the superintendent brought a recommendation, has the board said no?
No, but still, if you're an employee waiting on board approval, and you have two officers on the table, you have a contract now or you have to wait to approve. Sometimes they go with the, with sacred bet. Sometimes we've lost candidates. It'd be the better question. We've lost candidates because they've never been hired in the spot. They've had to wait for board approval.
So other districts don't have the same issue?
Well, the thing about it is, is their, their meeting may be before our meeting. So somebody else will be done higher before we did.
Or their superintendent has the same authority.
Some, somehow.
I can tell you College Station, that superintendent has authority throughout the entire year. And the only hiring he takes to the board is administrative hiring. It's whatever the board wishes.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Second, by Redd. It's open for discussion.
If, if, if this passes, I know in the, in the packets before this was, when you would bring it for approval, there was a lot more information about, about that, about that candidate. If this is passed, can, can we still get all of that information?
Typically emails it to us once it's, once he's made the hiring.
I think last year, Mr. Fowler still presents all the same information to me. And so the way it was happening last year, which was the first year, I would email that information to the board, letting them know we have hired this person. So that's why you didn't see all the write-up in the board packet because it was emailed to the board members. So I was keeping them apprised of the hiring in between board meetings. So the same recommendations are going to continue. That's, that's fine if they need to be put in the board packet. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I would like the same letter we used to get, but had all the information about the teacher, their years experience, sort of work. We used to have a lot of information about each candidate.
I think that's the letter he's been preparing.
So the letter that comes in our email comes with that information?
Yes.
He sends that out.
It's the same, he's sending me the same recommendations. So whether I print them and put them in the board.
So I have to print it off in order to have that information for myself.
Be in your email.
Or it's just in your email.
Right. I keep my emails. Okay. Go back and look for it. I just like it on the sheet of paper, but whatever. Easier for me, but whatever.
Well, and, and he's saying we could have that put in the packet too. So that would, you wouldn't have to print it. It'd be in the packet.
That'd be great. And the packet would be great.
Okay. So with that recommendation, we just add that in each packet, anything we do at the end of the month, just a summary, including his recommendation in later. Any further discussion? Does a favor, our motion carries six, oh. Item number 13, consideration of possible actions approved settlement, settlement. Consideration of possible actions approved settlement, settlement proposals and the pending lawsuits filed in Iowa Independent School District versus Delaware DBA Delaware Companies at All Cause Number 34610 pending in the 12th Judicial Court, Brownsville County, Texas.
You guys heard the information presented by Michael Gavito related to this lawsuit in closed session, and their specific motion language.
Do we need to, before I read this, do we need to designate which one of those options?
I haven't seen how that's worded.
It has all of the companies, but it does not have if, which one of the alternate or the...
I think it's alternate, he was suggesting, I don't see any reason why.
I would add that for what y'all need to discuss, is which...
So it would need to be in that.
He had the wording he said in the email that he went...
It doesn't include that.
Did you get a copy of that, or you're looking at this?
It's the email he told me he sent the language in, but it didn't give that option. So we just need to take that in our motion. Yes, sir.
Can I put that with this?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
So I move to accept the settlement proposal with Rice Drywall Inc., RW Piper Masonry Inc., Felton Plumbing Company, Bolton Steel Erectors, and Morris Drywall Systems Inc. As discussed in executive session and authorize the superintendent to execute any documents necessary to finalize the settlement using the alternative distribution.
I'll say. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, it's open for discussion. Our discussion, those in favor? Motion carries six oh. Item 14, consideration of teacher incentive allotment.
All right, Mr. Fowler, Misses Juski, have some wonderful information related to TIA.
Okay, it is exciting because, so basically through House Bill 3, they have, they have given districts an opportunity to provide teachers with higher pay. And so we have looked at that, and we have seen, what are we gonna have to do to move forward with this, to start entertaining this? Always in the way at some point, and I don't have my glasses. Okay. All right, so basically, there's two reasons for incentive allotment. And unlike what a lot of people think, that it is, you reward teachers, you know, your kids have to do good, and then you get your reward. It's not about that. The intent was to provide teachers with higher pay and to recruit and retain highly effective teachers, primarily in those hard-to-hire districts, rural districts, and things like that. So that's us. So tiny, sorry. So we had, we put together a committee, and one of the suggestions, we're working with a consultant, Dr. Tammy Cruz, who's, you know, has been focused on this, she's going, she's guiding us through this process. And she recommended that our committee consist of both secondary and elementary teachers to represent the, I guess, subjects that we wanted to look at qualifying for the allotment in our first year. So those are our committee members. And we, when we met with Dr. Cruz, it was before school 7:30, from about 7:30 to 9:30 is when we meet with her a few times. All right, and so the next thing we did is we surveyed, we had a staff meeting, each of us did, and we surveyed our campuses to see how they felt. Do they want us to continue to move forward with TIA? And about 90% of the elementary campus wants to go ahead with it, and that was out of, I think, 31 responses. On you being...
Okay, so I think the survey came up large, in large part, due to some of the questions that the high school teachers had, and the concerns about implementing the TIA program on our campus. So as you can see, of our 35 people actually vote, but as in the results of they, that we received from these, it was 50/50. Because of that, obviously, I gotta find out a little bit deeper what's going on, okay? So we'll go to the next one, please. All right, so I went to actually every single teacher that was gonna be on the list to, to be eligible, to qualify as one of the people either teaching an EOC or a STAR subject. I asked them personally, I sat down with each individual in their own classrooms, away from anybody else, and I just said, okay, tell me what you're thinking. What do you wanna do? Are you interested in this? Is, you know, like, where are you? Each and every one of them was very concerned about what it would do to our family culture, okay? I, I told them from the first, I am not here to sway you, this is your money, I have nothing I can do about it, I don't get a piece of it, I need to know what you guys feel, how you want to move forward. And then whatever you feel is how I'm gonna support, okay? So in that, I wanted to make sure I had everything that they wrote down, everything that they told me, okay? I had, one person was, yes, yes, I'd love to do it, I love more money, but that person said, but if everybody else is not wanting to do it, I don't wanna push them, all right? I had a maybe, I had one maybe. Maybe was, you know, I like the idea of money, but, you know, it doesn't seem fair and equitable. We don't have enough people that, everybody doesn't have a chance to make money. And then if you have a chance to make money, only certain people make it, and we all help. All of the no's, which is six of them, the rest of the, everybody else that was eligible, were emphatically against it. They said that we all work together. There's no way that you could put money in one person's hand and say that they are solely responsible for these STAR results, or these EOC results. Or you've got science teachers that only teach, only get graded on eighth grade, but they didn't have a seventh grade, even though it's the same teacher in our example here. But there are people that teach one subject, but the people before then that laid the foundation wouldn't get anything. And then just the idea of the animosity, that one person is making, what is it, $20,000? Up to $20,000 more than somebody else. Across the board, they were just worried. I mean, people will start shutting their door. You make $20,000 more than me, and you ask me for help, you ask me to help you on your lessons, we plan together. So there was just a lot of animosity on, or worried that there would be animosity towards those that made that extra money. We had some teachers that have come from other school districts that already implement this, and that was one of their main reasons for moving away, even though they were ones that qualified often. She said, or this person said that it did not help improve student scores. The people that, the worrisome thing is, is, and this is what I'm just conveying, is if there's teachers that all of a sudden start making better scores, you know, they're worried about, why did money take that? You know, so that's just, that is the gamut of what their concerns are, you know? So upon this information, we recommended, or we chose to opt out as the high school for this year for being involved in the TIA and receiving that money. And they were very supportive of that, and this is the teacher's recommendation, and I'm just trying to convey that to you all. So if you guys have any questions about that, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
So modified now to the TIA Iowa Elementary Plan. And again, just to be clear, it's not about, this isn't about, you know, dangling a carrot, you know, raise those scores, raise those scores, it's just about, you know, giving teachers a break, rewarding the, rewarding teachers for all their hard work that they're already doing. So that's really what the goal is. For, at the elementary, our eligible teachers, our committee and I talked about, you know, we have so many that have a hand in these kids' success and their growth. Our interventionist, our special education teachers, dyslexia. And so these are gonna be the ones that'll be, that'll be eligible for the designation that we'll talk about in a minute, as well as the money. We've got pre-K through six, English Language Arts teachers, second through six math teachers, our interventionists, that includes dyslexia, as well as our special education teachers. All right, so these are some of the required data points and scoring. So TEA said, if you're gonna do this plan, there's these two data points that you have to look at and score, teacher evaluation and student growth. So we worked, our committee worked with Dr. Cruz, and she had drafted up, you know, some ideas and some thoughts about how to score these things based on what other school districts have turned in and have gotten approved by TEA. And so for calculating teacher evaluation score, we're gonna do what we've already done. This is not to create more work for our teachers, it's just to, to use what we already do. So we're gonna be using TTEST, which is the rubric that's designated by the state for teacher evaluations. And so in each of these evaluations, there's 16 indicators that the teachers get scored on, and then a score sat out next to it. And so all those scores will be averaged together for one rating between one and five. And then the second part that we had to have was student growth. We're gonna use what we're, what teachers are already gonna be having, already doing three times a year. Pre-K for Language Arts, they're gonna be using Circle, which they already do. We're upping it, instead of stopping at second grade for M-class, we're gonna go to third, and you'll see why in a second, because fourth through sixth, we're gonna be using their STAR progress measures. It gives them either a one, they met progress, two, they exceeded their progress measure. And third grade doesn't have anything like that. So we wanted to go ahead and continue in that same line that K through two uses with M-class, we're gonna give it to third as well. We want third to be, to have a part of that. And Ms. Roberts has, is really excited about that, she's wanted that too this year. And then for math, we're gonna also be using M-class for second through third, because it, M-class comes with math also, and the teachers have been real happy with the reading part, and then STAR progress measure. Okay, this is where it looks really jumbled and a lot of information, but basically, and this is again drafted by Dr. Cruz and reviewed by our TIA committee. So here it has, okay, the number, the percentage of kids that scored, you know, in between the, I'm sorry, the percentage of kids who met or exceeded expected growth levels using those data points, they get a certain scale score. I don't know, it's all a bunch, but I'll put it all together in a minute. And how we're gonna weight this is we're gonna do 50% of their score is student growth and 50% is their TTEST evaluation score. And this is how it's calculated, their TTEST score multiplied by 50%, added to their class growth score by 50%, gives them their overall score. And this is how it works. So to be designated, so these are the designations, recognized exemplary or master teacher. And to be designated, your, your minimum score has to be a 3.75 or higher. And basically, it's gonna be the top 30% in the district. For recognized, top 15 is exemplary, top five in the district on scores gets master teacher. And that's how we're gonna go about that. What, what will happen is that those designations, so let's say one of our teachers becomes, you know, has an exemplary designation, that designation goes on her teaching certificate for five years, and she will receive that money, an lump sum, at the beginning of that year. So once we get all of our data points for the year, the TTEST scores, we've sat down, we've scored them, we have looked at their student growth scores, we've gotten a score for that, we take all of our data and we, the next fall, and we submit it to Texas Tech University for data validation. And what they'll look at is they'll see is their congruency between the teacher's TTEST scores and their growth, they should, they should be aligned. A teacher shouldn't have a low TTEST score and a really high student growth score. So they're looking at some congruency there. And then in the spring of 2023, we'll get the final approval and designation notification. All right, money. We came up with our spending plan, again, we worked with our consultant, and this is, this particular slide right here was not determined by us, it's determined by TEA. And it can be found on the TIA website, there's a map, and you click on your district, and it already designates how much money that those designations get.
So to clarify, that's per teacher?
Yes.
Per year?
Right, lump sum.
Or, or the five years and...
Per year?
Yes.
Right, per year. And how many teachers are gonna be, I guess, it depends on like, for scores, how many can we possibly have?
Well, it's the top 30% in the district, so our campus is just participating, so we're talking maybe one teacher at master. I can't remember the numbers now, but it's just those top, those top 30 scores, 30% of those scores.
Not in masters, but 30%.
5% on top 15 and second.
Yeah, 5% in the top, 30% recognized, and 15% exemplary.
And how many did we say were, were eligible?
Almost all of our teachers, except for like PE, we're not, we're looking to add them in, just not our first year. So we've got all of our pre-K, our pre-K teacher, our SED teachers, our interventionists, and all of our pre-K these six teachers will be eligible.
Do you know a number? How many, would you ask, how many have, what the number of those people add up to?
No, I don't have that. About 10 or 12 teachers are thinking.
It'll be a 15, well, of some category or other.
It would be in one of those three categories.
About 1.5.
There's 30% of them.
It's one, three, and six, then, it's 10.
One, three, and six.
1.5, whatever 1.5 is, because I don't know if they...
There's a half teacher in there. Are there any teachers that have done the National Board certification?
Yes, they will be included, and I think it's in the recognized, if they've done the National Board certification.
So you didn't have some people...
We don't have...
Oh, no, we don't have, I'm sorry, we don't have any currently.
They have the opportunity to go that route.
Yes.
Do we have anybody working on it?
Not that I know of, no.
And what's not mentioned here is this money, those teachers are designated, they earn that for the year, we pay it, and then the district reimburses us what we paid out in teacher incentive allotment.
The state.
The state, yes, the state does.
Is it a one-for-one, I mean, 100% reimbursement?
As far as I know, it is, yes, ma'am.
But we don't know if the state's willing to continue to pay that right.
Well, if they're not gonna pay it...
Then we're not gonna do it.
Then we're not gonna be doing it. Again, this, this, we're going through this because our, our plan, since we're in Cohort D, our plan is due to TEA by April 15th. And so we wanna continue on the track as if nothing's gonna change, but with the legislative session coming up, who knows what's gonna happen in teacher incentive allotment. There's been a lot of talk in, in the administrative world that teacher incentive allotment, teacher incentive allotment may go away. But if it doesn't, we wanna make sure we have our ducks in a row that we're offering this opportunity to our teachers.
The thing is, is there's, you know, schools around us that do it, and it sounds like if the schools around you are doing it, that's more enticing to go there, you know, and kinda don't have a choice, or have to jump in there too in order to recruit and retain our teachers.
So you just hear, Mr. Fowler just said the teachers, that's why they left, because they didn't, they didn't like that.
Right, and so that's why they're...
And I didn't think that would particularly do it, so...
Well, and also, I guess, what he had said, that the teacher said, you know, that it didn't increase student growth, well, it's not meant to do that.
Well, you're looking at growth.
Sure, which is what we do anyways, we already look at growth.
Right. But what I don't like about elementary is that these, all these tests are given by the teachers. If you wanna get a test that's like Iowa or something like that, but, I mean, you're getting, the teacher checks to these tests.
Well, that's how STAR is, the teachers administer the STAR test as well.
No, on STAR, the teachers don't give the test individually.
Yes, and we have one-on-one test administration, yes.
For STAR?
Yes, we do have...
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, well, and M-class is not created by the teachers either, which is what we're using.
Now, I'm talking about for STAR test, the kids take the test on their own.
Oh, yes, yes.
And for these, for M-class, the teacher is sitting there giving the individual kid the test, asking them questions. Read this, these words for me, or read this, you know what I'm saying? It's not a standardized test, like, I'm not standardized. It's not a test that the kids take on their own by themselves.
Not K through two, because they're still learning how to read. There are some portions of it where they take it by themselves. Yes, and some portions of it they can do, they, they do do by themselves. But most of it is the teacher going through.
And they're teacher rated. Here at STAR, it's not teacher rated.
Right. So you're worried that... So you're worried that elementary teachers are going to cheat?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, so what was your point?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think it's reliable. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the direction we should be going.
Well, that's good.
But I kind of, I don't think that's a direction to go.
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to turn our plan, we're going to turn our plan into TEA and they'll decide if it's reliable or not. If they decide if it's reliable or not, then we'll move forward.
Well, everything I read said you should have, you should have buy-in from the community, which I don't know if the community knows anything about. You should have buy-in from the...
From the community of teachers get bonuses?
Buy-in for the, for the plan and from the board. And this is only the second time I've heard anything about it, about the board.
Okay. Well, it doesn't require board approval, just that we let you know about it, which is what we're doing. And also, 90% of our teachers want it, so...
I do see on the checklist that it did say something, might not have to be a vote that says board approval. I did show you the checklist.
Sure, I need that one.
Okay.
The problem I have, whether it is the teachers saying they want that opportunity, the state's providing the money, I always feel bad telling teachers, no, we're not going to give you that opportunity if that's what your campus is telling us they want.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't particularly care for the program. It's not sustainable, I don't think, but I'm not going to be the one to tell a teacher, no, I'm not going to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I don't know how long it's going to last.
They might be going by survey, did they want to do it? If they actually were having an opportunity, I might want to. But if you talked to them one-on-one, did you feel like it's going to cause any kind of issues, like the high school teacher said?
So here, so I...
I think it would be.
I did talk to, I did talk to a teacher, just not formally, just in passing about it, we were just talking about it, and their concerns were, you know, from what secondary was saying, you know, about there being jealousy because I have the designation on my certificate, jealousy because I get paid more. And so I just asked her, I said, you know, do you have your master's degree? Well, yeah. Okay, so that's a designation on your certificate. And in some districts, you get paid more, teachers do, for having a master's degree. Didn't you at your other district? Well, yeah. Did people hate you because you had something special written on your certificate? Or that you got paid more on the ladder? Well, no. Okay, so that's just what it's looked at as, it's just bonus.
But they're not identifying more for a master's, no.
No.
Because I was doing anything extra, no.
We're trying to.
Because I would be mad, no.
Right, yes. Yes, and so the teachers thought it was worth a shot, let's go for it, let's see.
So if we go into it and we decide to opt out, we can, that's my question one, and then two, is state funded?
Yes. Yeah, and so any of these teachers that are eligible, if they decide that, let's say they qualified for designation, master for example, and they really don't want the designation, they can opt out. And so they, I mean, we still have to turn in all the data anyways, they would just be opting out of the designation and the pay.
I'm just going to say that I, I mean, if 10 teachers are going to be the ones that are going to be able to benefit from it, and we definitely have more than 10, it just seems like, I kind of agree that, you know, all of them are responsible for, as they move up, we're building, and, I mean, if, that seems, seems like we're asking for problems. It's mean.
I just know that, you know, with other districts around us doing it, a teacher has an opportunity, she's a rock star teacher, to go make $20,000 extra dollars a year, you know, because they're doing something that we had an opportunity at, but we didn't because we were too afraid of what might happen. You know, I hate to lose out on those opportunities.
That's one of the reasons, one of the purposes behind this is teacher recruitment and retention. And the point Ms. Sedzuski is making is that if I'm a top-notch teacher here in Iowa and we're not doing teacher incentive allotment, but nor does Zulch is, or Anderson is, and I could possibly make $19,000 more, where am I going to go where?
And I don't remember the numbers. Alec, what would you say to those teachers that said they won an opportunity?
I mean, I, I know it's not board consideration right now, I, I'm kind of with Jason in that I don't think it's sustainable. I don't think, you know, I listen to every hearing the legislature has, and it's, I do not think it's going to pass again. I think it's going to be stripped. And, you know, so I think we're going to be left with, we pay it one year, we're going to get it back, and, you know, it's going to, what we're going to be left with is not the $20,000, it's going to be the hurt feelings. And there's a reason companies, you know, have policies not to discuss pay, you know, and, you know, I think every one of our teachers is a rock star. And I would rather, you know, let's find a way, and I know the state wouldn't pay for it, but, you know, to, you know, maybe put more than just a step in pay-wise, you know, and say Iowa is committed to paying the teachers on a sustainable way more, you know, than something the state is, is going to stir up. I can see this project program in a Dallas ISD where, I mean, that was the beginnings of it, you know, where they were having people having a hard time getting to those inner-city schools and that. And superintendent there says that it is one of the things that directly is responsible for, going from double-digit failing schools to single-digit failing schools, because they were able to get those teachers in.
Well, when I say former teacher, I never liked anything like this. We had career letter in the day when I was teaching, it's how long ago it was, it's not ever good, it's never good.
Morale.
Morale, never good. I hate it. And of course, the state didn't continue paying for it anyway. But I don't like anything like that.
Did it become an unfunded mandate on the school? Did the school...
No, they just kind of, they just kind of changed the step and the pay and all that about the same time.
It just kind of went away eventually.
Do you have more slides, Ms. Sedzuski?
I have two. I have two. This is how the spending plan would look, like as far as how the money out is allocated. 90% of it would go to the designated teacher, and they suggest that 10% go to those programs, back to the campus, which means it would go back to help sustain those programs that we focus on for student growth. So it would go to help pay for M-class, you know, explaining M-class, it would go to help pay for different interventions that we can use and things like that. And then, this is the last one. This is, if we continue on, this is going to be our next steps. You can't even see that last one. I thought I was being fancy with it. So the next thing we're going to do by April 15th, we, applications due to TEA. And then they look over it, they may send it back to us with some questions or things to revise or look at. But then the, actually, the application result notification is right before school starts. And then November 2022, that's when we submit our data to Texas Tech, and then it gets approved February and April. Between February and April, it'll get approved, our data will, and then we'll be notified of the designation. And then the initial, yeah, then it says a whole year of data collecting submission, and then the initial payout and reimbursement would occur August and September 2023.
Do we have the data, do we have the equipment that could keep up with all this data for these teachers, like the scores, or the T-Test, whatever tests, you have something that can keep up with all this data?
Yeah.
The observation data stays in the system once you enter it. So the T-Test is already the teacher observation system we're using. Essentially, our teachers are doing nothing new. They're already observed each year, and the observation data goes in the T-Test program. They're already giving student assessments, and you start seeing some of that M-class data tonight. So it's not requiring any more of our teachers. Again, the plan that we submit to TEA doesn't require board approval, and it's a pretty tedious application, and it's due April 15th. Do we need to actually put this on the April 19th agenda for the board to decide if we want to do TIA at all? Because I'm hearing both sides. We can still submit our application on April 15th, and if the board so chooses on the 19th not to do TIA, then we can always opt out as a district. Is that the direction we want to go? Or is the board okay with us moving forward?
Or is the administration wanting it? Obviously, I think the reason you told me it's here is because it's a split decision between the two.
Yeah, I sense we brought it to the board for your blessings to move forward because we are split as a district. When we started the process, it was to afford the opportunity to both secondary and elementary teachers. We found out secondary doesn't want that, that's the feedback they're giving us, we respect teacher input, so we said, okay, put the brakes on it. Elementary wants it, let's continue making our plan so that we can afford those teachers the opportunity. So the reason I was bringing it to the board is to make sure we had your blessings and move forward because we were a split district. I don't think it's a big issue moving forward with one campus doing it and one campus not doing it, because a lot of districts are starting their program with just their elementaries anyway. Dr. Cruz has told us time and time again, don't let this be an issue because some of your bigger districts are simply starting with one or two elementaries. And then, once they get into it and fine-tune their, their process, then they'll expand that to other campuses. I, as superintendent, recommend it because, again, for teacher retention and teacher recruitment. Because, you know, a lot of these teachers, I understand, they say they're not here for the pay, and that's fantastic. When we start talking about the possibility of making $19,000 more if you go next door, that might cost us some teacher retention.
They got to make it when they go next door, though.
Well, your teachers, your teachers that are going to be eligible for it here, they're going to be eligible for it next door.
Well, I just don't, I personally am not for it, that's pretty obvious. I'm not for it at all. And I'm not, I'm not sure that the buy-in's been here, I'm not sure for the teachers or anybody.
I don't know if we, since it's not stated that way on here, if we can even vote on it. And that's why I'm asking, do we want to vote on it tonight, or do we want to...
Start on there for consideration of action.
Consideration, so...
Move it to the night, would you say, 19?
That doesn't, would be our April meeting, it's the 19th.
I don't think it's a bad idea to move it and let everybody think about it, stew on it, do some more research.
But for board information, we're still going to submit our application to TEA for the 15th, by the 15th, so that if the board approves it, it's there where it's supposed to be. And if the board does not approve it, then we'll call TEA and say, we're not doing this, we're opting out. Is that okay with the board?
Will you show this slide one more time, what are the numbers? How they, how they decided they wanted to do it or didn't want to do it? Where you had the two campuses, one of your very first slides. Can you tell me the numbers from the elementary? I can't see that one.
Yeah, the question was, do you think elementary campuses should participate in a teacher incentive allotment program? 90.3, yes. 9.7, no.
How about, how many votes?
31, so I think that was three teachers, no.
It'd be hard for me to tell them. I understand there's issues that could come with it, but, you know, we'll put it on the agenda.
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, when was the first time the teachers were notified of this or had a meeting and were told about this?
When did they do that?
I don't know. The, yeah, the first stakeholder meeting...
Yeah, it was before February, it was before 7.
And maybe they didn't, maybe they don't even know nothing about it, but they're like, well, if we're going to do it now, I want to be a part of it, but I don't really know that much about it.
I don't know, principals, do you feel like your campuses were informed about the program?
I do, and they were, I mean, they were informed enough to not want to vote no, they don't want it.
Right.
I mean, the same presentation.
So they weren't informed enough to vote yes as well?
Yeah, the same presentation.
I trust, I trust the principals' take on whether their campuses knew and understood the program.
I think they know a lot about it, they're very informed on it.
And they'll get another presentation after we submit our application. They'll get another presentation to ask even more questions if they want, and I also, my newsletters have like a frequently asked questions document that they send me questions and I find the answer and they can read it there, too.
And there's even a chance, correct me if I'm wrong, because you guys have become much more educated in TIA than I have as you've worked with your campuses and developing your plan. But even though we, there's a chance we can submit it to TEA. TEA approve our application, and Texas Tech reject our data. So...
Well, I understand that Texas Tech sends out a survey to the teachers, how will they move on?
Yes, they will. They, Texas Tech may put the brakes on it after they send out a teacher survey.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, after, yeah, after we submit, they'll send us a, they'll send out the teachers a survey and make sure the teachers know, as many of you as possible, please fill it out. They have two weeks to fill it out and submit it back.
Okay. So is that okay with the board if we submit our application, but we'll bring it to you for your approval on April 15th?
19.
19. See, I'm already changing on the stage, I'm going to talk to that.
There you go. All right, let's move to item 15, consideration versus new gym floor and bleachers.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Are you awake?
Yes, sir. I'm awake. He has been doing lots, been doing lots of work on this project for us, I can't, I can't thank him enough. You see from the bids in your board packet, there's numerous bids there, that he has met with lots of people, talked to lots of people, and I think he has a recommendation for you, but I'm going to turn the floor over to him because he is much more educated about the situation than I am.
Basically, with everybody within the area, I think there were a total of five particular companies that came in to bid the flooring. And after basically reviewing the contracts, I had personally kind of settled or want to recommend one particular company because they want to do a package which would include the bleachers and the gym floor. Had a pretty decent little discount for the two. Also, after following up with them, calling the different school districts that they have, their product in, they're excited with these people. They seem like from, from the moment the contract was signed to the very end and even beyond, if they ever had an issue, they were right out there to take care of it. And this is larger school districts, and I do have a lot of recommendations from them. We tried to call as many as we could and get ahold of as many as that we could. But larger school districts, Cyfair, even down to the smaller school districts, the Tuves, their basic turnaround is ordering is, completion is about eight weeks, so our gym will be out for about eight weeks. But I do highly recommend them, there are the other bids there, you're welcome to look at. But with the package consideration between the discount between the bleachers and the floor together, is a pretty sizable discount.
And that's Ballard?
That is Ballard.
I noticed that several of these had a good for 60 days, good for 30 days, are they still, since we didn't meet last month, are we still okay with things?
Yes, they're still good with the prices. The problem we have is, we're trying to do this as, get them in as quickly as possible, as soon as school is over, and get them out before school starts again, especially when it comes to volleyball. It's basically going to be between the floor and the bleachers, it's an eight-week turnaround, could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more. The problem is materials, just like the bleachers. If you guys consider this tonight, we're 12 weeks out right now before we, they even could produce the bleachers. Same way with kind of the flooring is ordering the materials, because we all know what materials are, we're having to materials now. So the reason I asked Mr. Markell, we can bring it up at this, at this meeting, is where we can proceed to make sure we get that early June start time, where we can get finished by late July, or maybe middle of July, which is probably late July.
I didn't see that there were real significant differences in what they were bidding. I mean, there were, did you see, would you say there were any real differences in the type of floor they would be providing?
No, sir, it's, they're, it's pretty standard. Yes, sir. All, in fact, all of them were pretty much, as far as the flooring themselves was standard. The only holdup that we have on this particular project, I'm waiting on Taz to get back with me now, we possibly may have asbestos under the floor that we have now. Possibly. So there might be an abatement. But they're due out to test. It was supposedly tested in, I think it was '92. Uh, it's, it was supposedly tested in, I think it was ninety-two, that showed the areas that they tested were negative. Um, but with the type of flooring that it is, and the subfloor, there are possibly some underling that could be, but I don't think it's gonna happen. So that's another thing I'm trying to kind of keep moving forward with. But as far as the, the end product, no, they're pretty, all pretty much standard. There's a lot of things that, that can be added or subtracted as far as the look. Three-point lanes could be actually in a different stain. Just the decals could be different. There's a lot of that that we'll have to decide that that's later into the project before it's finished. Uh, the bleachers, I think it's pretty standard. As far as a maroon background, that, I have a picture of those, I don't know if it's in, I don't think it's in the package. It's pretty standard, it's kind of somewhat similar to what we have now. There's a modification to the bleachers to where, um, if either way we go with new bleachers or refurbish the bleachers that we have now, they have to be A D A certified, and we're not. Okay? Um, so with that aspect, we're looking, if we were to refurbish our bleachers, we would lose a lot of seating, because we can't do the A D A with it. Um, or we can't, I'm sorry, rephrase that. With a new set of bleachers, they have push-in sections for A D A. That if you have A D A person, that section will come out and you'll lose a little seating. If you have nobody in the, in the audience that is A D A compliant or needs A D A, then they go in and gives you the more seating. We would not be able to do that with our bleachers now. And they would have to be brought up to A D A standards, so we'll lose seating. So that's kind of the reason I'm recommending the bleachers as well as the flooring, and this company can do both.
And that's including the removal of the...
That is removal. They also suggested that during the removal process, that we, they typically will cut the old floor in four-by-four squares, and then the act, actually auction those off as a little moneymaker, so it's really a pretty good program that they, I mean, it's not gonna pay for the floor, but it offsets maybe going to the booster club or back to the fund, or, just an idea.
And believe it or not, as late as yesterday, I had people ask if we, if there would be handrails on the bleachers.
Yes. Yes, sir. Uh, those are requirements. Um, and the other thing that we're, we're talking about or suggesting is, with the new bleachers on the home side, we're limited to, we can put in a small section to get a little bit extra room, and we can go up one row, okay? Without impinging on the, the court. Now, on the visitor's side, we can go quite a bit further on both ends, because there's really nothing that would keep the aggress getting out. So that's also in this, this proposal with Bauer, is for those extra digits. And I don't think that you have this picture. It's not actual seating as in, I think you do have it right there, okay? Uh, it's not, uh, this is basically bench seating like we have now, it's not seating seats. So that's my contouring.
What would, is there any kind of bid on what it was for, have some chair seats and then stadium seats?
Yeah, can we, can we do, uh, pay for those like Norah Zulz did, right? Some of the people in the community paid for them, chairs.
No, I did not get a hundred and a half years ago.
That's just like the pitch you did.
And, um, since we're talking about a lot of money between the two, the, the root fleet, is, is that been addressed?
I talked to our contractors on that, they should be out soon to resolve that, and, and we're just actually talking as well as maybe still under warranty, to where they could do a lot more in-depth to make sure that it's taken care of. Uh, but we want, that's one of the things we need to make sure that is done before the, the June date.
They're gonna do a discount of fourteen thousand if the bleacher did.
I don't wanna say doing that new floor without doing the bleachers.
I'd like, yeah, I, I'd, yeah.
At B.
Yeah, if we don't do the bleachers, what they would do is, A, we're violation.
Right.
Uh, and B, if we have to, there's also a, a vendam in here that they, amount they charge to remove the bleachers and then come back.
Hmm.
But we're not legal, unfortunately.
And the gym was eighty, eighty-one, or is that eighty?
Eighty-four.
I didn't get the set put in.
We were supposed to.
So we're looking at a hundred ninety-eight, eight seventy?
Yes, sir, I believe that's the total. Now, give or take a few dollars here and there for the different graphics, and I was discussing with Mr. Markdale, if this is approved, is to kind of get with the community and get with the coaches, with the facilities committee, as far as going ahead and, not that we need them now, because it doesn't change the floor, but the color of seating's, of course, I think, which would be maroon, but it may be purple, it may be green, however, is decided. But we need to decide those things quickly, as far as the graphics for the floor goes, that will be as we move along, we don't have to have it. We just, the, the, it's just the twelve weeks out for the bleachers, and as far as getting our on-time schedule, starting June seventh, uh, for the floor, uh, because other districts, they fight for the same times that we do, and whoever signs first, basically those days start getting penciled in.
Uh, if, if the seating's green, we probably lose miss.
Probably.
Exactly, yeah.
So again, we did make quite a few calls, unfortunately, I was born to try to get out to some of the school districts and actually see their work, but after talking to these numerous school districts, they're very, very pleased, they gave them an A plus or a, a five-star rating.
And that's pretty good.
Nobody had a complaint whatsoever, and there's a multitude of districts.
I would see on the stadiums, it's the fourteen thousand, they're knocking off the pay for it, put on the home side.
Next question, sir?
I would see how many stadium seats that they would put in for the fourteen thousand, or, or, I mean, that's the option, I just, I think we've got people that come to these games that need, need a little something to sit on versus...
Okay, I could find one.
Uh, they did, I mean, I've been asked that several times.
That's on the home side, right?
Right, just on the home.
I would love it.
I, I, I mean, they'll sit in them if they got chairs, I mean, that's, it's a lot.
So you're saying, do you want the price on the home side as far as all stadium seats?
No.
Just one section?
Maybe a section for a couple rows.
Working fourteen thousand, man.
Okay, okay.
I mean, they're knocking off fourteen thousand, asking, so we'll, we'll pay the full amount, how many stadium seats we put in?
And two, you know, right now, they keep score right in the middle of the home side, is there, I mean, is there some other way?
Oh, and that's, that's one other thing that I'm discussing now, uh, with our scoreboard people. Um, we have, with the scoreboards that we have, are going Wi-Fi or digital, so we don't have to be right there...
Right.
In the, in the stands. We can actually control the game anywhere, physically wireless.
Tens of people up there.
Well, if we could get, if we could get that to the floor, you know, a lot of schools have it on the floor to where it's not up in the stands.
Yeah, well, the problem is now, is that our connection for the scoreboxes, it's actually wired into the bleachers, so with the new bleachers, it won't be there.
Okay.
Because basically, you can sit anywhere with the box and control the scoreboard's being wireless.
I'd love to see that come out the stands and get us real free.
Yeah, we don't have enough, I'm afraid we don't have enough space between the stands and the benches for our, our scorer's table to be on the floor. Could you just do a little cutout or something?
It could be a...
You know, something, you know?
Or the, the end where the, where the locker rooms are.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure people don't sit there.
Sure.
I, I, I think that if, you know, I'm comfortable with the Bauer, you know, company, especially if they're doing the discount, you know, it sounds like we're interested in some, some options, you know, from, from them, but, you know, I, I think we need to get on the schedule.
Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept.
Motion, we have a motion by Mr. Porter, second by Red.
With the understanding...
And now it's open for discussion.
With the understanding that this comes from a signed fund balance?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Just so we're clear.
We're talking about the signed fund.
Well, I just wanna know, I just want everyone to be clear on where the funding's coming from.
If there's a discussion, does it figure right in? Motion carries six oh, item number sixteen.
Thank you.
Substitution person replaced by...
You waited for your turn, didn't you?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Callahan, for being here. Uh, we have our transportation expert here with us. You have a couple of bids there. What you have in your packet, I believe one bid is for a different used bus, uh, different from the one that was discussed in January, that might be the last page. Uh, then before that is bids for two new buses, and I believe the difference in those two new buses is air conditioning. So your first bid there is eighty-eight thousand, one twenty-five. The second new bus is ninety-six thousand, twenty-five. And then the third bid is a, another used bus that's very similar to the one that was discussed in January for seventy-one thousand, nine hundred. And I believe our, yes, our insurance check we received was in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three ninety-three. So I am just opening the floor up to discussion. Uh, there was a lot of discussion given to this in January, there were some questions that I could not answer, so that's why I asked Mr. Callahan to be present tonight, so he could answer all questions and we could get this bus replaced.
So the, the difference between the two new buses with air conditioning and not is seventy-nine hundred dollars, right?
That's correct.
So, um, and, and we've had a lot of discussion about if we had one with air conditioning, we needed to have multiple with air conditioning, because no one wants to make the call that the football team gets it over the volleyball, and volleyball gets it over, or the band gets it over...
That is absolutely correct.
So, is, is seventy-nine hundred close to what we would have to do to retrofit any of the other ones, if we decided to go with the air conditioner?
G D C gave us a price, um, it was close to ten thousand dollars for each bus.
Okay.
Is what they were pricing us.
How do they hold up when you, when you put something like, add something like that? I mean, I would think it wouldn't be as good as it would be when the bus was made, but...
Well, I mean, you have wearers here on the engine over time, of course, but as far as a diesel, um, you know, horsepower is always a horsepower on a diesel.
I'm talking about the air conditioning.
The add-on, I like...
The add-on air conditioning.
Add the air conditioning to our existing bus. How would that hold up compared to when it comes from the factory with an A C?
It would be basically the same thing, because basically what you're doing is you're running two compressors, um, you're running the hosing to the back, and of course, that's being all secured, and you're gonna have your evaporators underneath, and you're gonna have condensers inside the unit, and they're gonna be secure the same way they would be in any other bus. My only concern, though, is, um, with, if y'all decided to go with putting A C in the older buses, which I would presume to be, we'll call the van buses, which is twenty-three, uh, I believe, twenty-two and twenty-three, um, they're a little bit better insulated than the other two buses, which is twenty and twenty-one. Okay? Well, I'll call them athletic buses, because that's how it would hand it to me when we transfer everything over. So, uh, I guess I pretty much answered.
What is your suggestion out of the three?
My suggestion is, you know, is we look at, they have three buses in Oklahoma that are gonna be with air conditioning. They're both seventy-seven passenger buses, not seventy-one passenger buses, okay? So they're asking seventy-one thousand for that bus. Um, if we're gonna spend an extra thirty thousand on top of our insurance money to get one bus with one A C, we could actually get one ramp bus with A C, take both van buses, put A C in them, and then also take both of those buses, twenty-three, twenty-two, and have them painted, and actually come out three thousand dollars less than we're looking at one bus.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
So the painting, what are you talking about, like, like, wrapping them, repainting?
They're completely painted, repainted like...
No, ma'am, he's not talking about the ramp.
No, you're not talking about that.
It's, it's two buses that are run very well, very reliable buses, but the paint has faded, so they look like older buses, even though they are more, two of the most reliable buses. So what he's saying is, they would just be a nice shiny new yellow, like they just came off the line, instead of the faded color.
So remind me, can you tell me, like, how many buses do we have, Sean? How many of those are operational?
Thirteen.
So we don't have any junk buses sitting over there across the street?
Well, yeah, but they're not on this list. You, you're talking about total, like...
So we, okay, so we got, we've got thirteen on...
I believe there's three buses out there, but we can only use...
Across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so every day on ramps? Are we running all thirteen buses?
Uh, no, ma'am, the little shitty bus is still out there, number eleven.
Okay, so we, so we have twelve buses that we run every day on ramps?
Yes, ma'am. Well...
We're down...
We're down one now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're actually down eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I haven't taken twenty-six off this one yet, so it, that one's gone.
Okay.
You've been, have you ever been around any of them with A C?
Yes, sir, we used to have one, actually, it was, um, yes, sir, in high school, we had one.
Really?
Yeah.
We had a, number eighteen.
So Red must have ruined it for everybody.
Yeah, he did. Yeah.
How did they, does it stand up on our conditions that they're running?
Yes.
Well, it runs a lot better than what it used to be.
Well, sure, I mean...
I give the county that. Um, yeah, we didn't have very good...
Well, I would think the buses are upgraded also, too.
Right, and that was my deal with insulating, you know, putting them on a used bus, because they're a little insulated, a little bit different nowadays than they were back in there, but we had the two thousand, and that bus, you know, we had two A C units in it, and I remember taking a field trip, coming back from Houston, and they were all complaining, and it was two o'clock in the afternoon, and they're like, can you do something about the air conditioning? It was on, I mean, you know, it's, it's the nature of bees in Texas, it's, be the hundred degree weather on highways.
Oh, yeah.
Something...
I don't know, but I see, but I kept going.
This used bus, this used bus, um, this is twenty seventeen, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And it only has thirty-five thousand miles, why are they getting rid of it?
Well, they're a large company, and they take all the lease, so we, the school districts, like five-day school districts, have leased buses, so every, whatever their contract is, it for three, four years, they trade in all those buses, and then they get brand-new buses. And it's a complete revolving door on buses for large districts. These companies purchase them, and they'll sell them outright, they sell them overseas, they sell them here in the United States, and basically, it's, it's quite a large operation. And this isn't all they do, I mean, it's just not school buses, they do everything through them. Tour buses, I mean, you name it, they do it. But, um, that's pretty much the information that I've done research on, and I think it would be beneficial for the district to move in this, you know, this direction. And if we like the new buses, because twenty twenty-one, which I talked to Mr. Porter about the doors, um, you know, we had issues with that bus from day one, and that was one reason why we can't even use twenty twenty-one on ramps, because of the lights, the old lights won't work, and it's just an engineering fault that international did, and no matter who we talk to or try to get to fix it, it can't be fixed, it is just a bad design, and they only did it one year, and that was it.
Do we have two of those buses? Like that? Okay, so have we looked at, like, selling those? Are they worth anything to sell?
I really don't know those particular types of buses, I mean, we still have those I mean, we still have those buses out there we need to auction off, so I literally don't know what you'd actually get for these, because I'm sure they go on swico and...
But they're still on a route?
They're on a route, we just send them on, on trips, because you can't use them on...
Because you don't have to open clothes, open clothes, open...
Talking about the flashing lights whenever you stop, associated with the door opening and closing.
After so many opens and closes, it just...
Ms. Harvey, I can interject here.
Yes, sir.
For selling, I've been looking one as a camper conversion.
On this, those particular, those particular buses that you're, that he's talking about, resale on right now is probably about three to five thousand. So it's very, very well open.
But they are good trip buses?
They're very good trip buses.
Yes, they are. I mean, we've never had, we've never had any issues with buses, or any of those buses. The only one we've had issue with was twenty-three, I think it broke down, I swear it was, an insole relay, I mean, that's all that was. And they only have the twenty-two and twenty-three, which I'm talking about, for the AC and repainting. One has fifty-seven and one has seventy-seven thousand miles, so...
But this, I'm sorry, but this purchase with an air conditioner is not going to help, is not, we're still not going to have a trip bus, right? With air conditioning?
We'll have two.
We're going to have two?
Give your, give your little spiel again that you said about, about the...
It's not, it's not going to be a new bus.
Whatever you said you liked.
Yeah, you're... So we buy the one bus that Oklahoma, which has, which has three of them.
For seventy-one nine?
For seventy-one nine, it has AC in it, okay?
Oh, it does.
That's a seventy-seven fast-train bus.
Okay.
So basically, we would put that bus on, I, I would presume, three, the route three, and then replace that bus. Then we take the band buses that are going to get new paint jobs and put AC on them too, both of them. So twenty-two, twenty-three, get new paint jobs and AC units on them.
That'd be three buses.
That'd be three buses.
And what about football players?
For ninety thousand.
Or they're going to go in air conditioning?
We only need... They could take...
The used bus we're buying, huh?
Sir?
That could take the used bus we're buying out.
Well, twenty-three and twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three are going to be open. We're, we're not going to use it on a route.
He's calling them band buses, but they'll be used for other than band.
So all three of these could then be used, you know, for, for trips? You know, one band, one for football, one for volleyball?
So maybe they take the one off the route to take on a, on a trip with the kids, like it's a game or something. You could take one off the route, the one that we're going to purchase for the route.
You could. You're still going to have two, you're still going to have two buses AC, also that might be available.
So her question is, if band, football, and volleyball are all traveling on a Friday afternoon before school's out, are you going to be able to send them off in the, in the bus with AC?
One of them won't have it.
Okay, that's what I think she's asking.
One of them won't have it.
Who are you going to take, Ms. Mallon, who's not going to get it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to make a trade.
Coach of the high school.
I would probably say the football players, because they usually have to go the longest.
Well, of course, and that's what...
You know, but I, I don't know, but I was just wondering.
It's a start, it's not perfect.
Right.
What does board think?
You know, I, I came in thinking for one of the new ones, but I think you've convinced me for the used one with AC.
Other, other than the AC warranty on the, the used bus, other than that, there's no warranty after you buy it?
I believe it's five years bumper to bumper.
Oh, yeah.
Which is...
That's about all it was on the new, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So are all these seventeen models, these used buses?
It's not about... Are they all?
You said they, they had three buses?
Yeah, they had three of them.
But we're just going to buy one?
We're just looking at one, that's all we need.
And then we're going to put air conditioning on the others?
Others too.
And, and as far as you know, there's, there's no of these, you know, they only did it one year, you know, we couldn't sell it if we tried, problems with this year's, with the two thousand seventeen model?
No, sir. Those, those are awesome buses. They're, they're just unbelievable, super nice.
I don't like, I don't like to buy a used car, and I don't watch, I don't know anything about a used bus, but not top me into it too.
The best way to look at it is like, if you were going to go buy a brand-new diesel truck, okay, and you really want it, well, you just got a hundred thousand, you just got a hundred thousand dollars on it, you'd be funny same truck. Because we had, you only put eight thousand dollars on it, you took the five truck down seventy. Personally, me, I would, I would let the person that bought the truck be picked, and I just think it's, you know, you know, it's sort of...
And Ms. Mallon, I think, if that, I think you're, you're, you're thinking about new car warranty versus used car warranty? I think he's, he said that it has the same warranty as, as the new one.
Yeah. Right.
And it's, they're not cars, they're trucks, they're, they're freestyle.
In this situation, we're, we're not going to vote on adding the air conditioning or the other...
It must be on the whole bucket list. Yes, that's correct.
So all it would be...
So what would hap... Yes, tonight, board, all you're voting on is which one of these bids here, the two new or the used, which one you want to purchase to replace the total bus? And just acknowledging that whichever one it is, it will require us to take some amount of money out of fund balance, because we only have sixty-six thousand dollars from the insurance company. So whatever, whichever bus we use, the additional money will come from fund balance. We've talked about in the process of buying this used bus, that we would then also paint two of our existing buses and put AC on those two. That would have to be in, at April's meeting, because it's not in our language tonight, and it's coming from fund balance. So regardless of the amount, which both amounts would be low enough for us to just do in, in a normal situation, but we're taking money from fund balance to do that. So you would look for those items to be on April's agenda to paint the two existing buses and put AC on them. Does that all make sense? So all your motioning tonight is which bus you would like to purchase. And I just need everyone to acknowledge that the difference, the difference in the insurance check and the cost of the bus will come from fund balance, assigned fund balance.
Make a motion to purchase the used bus and take the difference out of fund balance.
So, motion by Tammy, second by Scott. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Consideration of special ed bus.
There we go, we're a bus talk tonight, so you have two, you have two bids here for a special ed bus. This is something we've been talking about for quite some time as well. We budgeted for this this year in our regular budget, we set aside, I believe, as one hundred and five thousand dollars. The difference between these two bids, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Callahan, one is diesel and one is gasoline.
Yes, sir.
So the most, the bid for one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four would be the diesel, and the bid for ninety-eight thousand, thirty-nine would be gasoline.
That is correct, and I've just got the bid for the other one, the international, which I got down to ninety-nine thousand.
And that would be a...
Same size, forty-seven fast-train.
Diesel or gasoline?
Diesel.
Diesel. So you have an international diesel for ninety-nine thousand and some change?
Yes, sir.
And you have a Bluebird diesel for one oh-one, two ninety-four. So that's the data presented to you, board.
So you like one better than the other, international or Bluebird?
I would prefer international.
So the one that's cheaper?
Yes, sir.
For the diesel?
Yes, sir.
And our other buses, are they all used calling?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We don't have that one in here, though.
He has it right here.
Just if you would tell us the number, ninety-nine? Imagine we should say it.
Nine-nine, seven, seventy-nine.
International.
Yes, sir. And I give this to Ms. Mark.
Yes, sir.
Twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Sir?
Twenty twenty?
What year model?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-two? So it's a year newer than the diesel one?
I am. I just appreciate you.
Is there, is there, is there a reason, I'm sure there is, that we can't take the special ed bus to Jameson thing?
Because they don't have a wheelchair ramp and stuff, interrupt.
We can still use it, you can still use it.
It's a big bus.
Yes, ma'am. The problem...
Go ahead, Mr. Callahan, I apologize.
I'm sorry. The problem we had, we had a presser go out on us. Well, we tried to find the, the pulley for it, and we went to international and asked them about it, and we gave them model number, gave them everything. We can't find that pulley, they, they do not have that pulley. And when they made the bus, I don't know how, they did it, but they made a special pulley for it. So one of our units isn't running, and there's nothing we can do to put it online. So we could have, and we have a leak on the other AC unit online, so we had to, you know, fix that. But beside that, you know, that's, that's the only problem, but we put a lot of money into that bus.
Well, I'm just asking about the new bus. The new bus, can it be taken on trips? The new special ed bus that we have purchased?
The new special ed bus we're getting ready to purchase? Yes, ma'am, but essentially it will only seat, it's only going to have how many regular seats?
Twenty-seven.
Volleyball?
Right, twenty-seven.
As long as it's after school.
So it can go on...
It runs every day.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it runs a route every day, so as long as it's after school, it can travel.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Need a motion, I think, if y'all are in agreement.
I don't have a paper in front of me.
Did you make a motion?
No, wait, no one.
I made, I made a motion that we purchased the, what, international for ninety-nine?
Seven seventy-nine?
Seven seventy-nine.
I'll second. Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Most carries six oh. Board goes?
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
You're not going to tend us if you leave either.
Okay.
Agenda item eighteen is the board goals. We had a board workshop last Wednesday night, we got these down. I made a final edit and emailed those out on Thursday. Mr., Mr. Pointer had asked for an additional progress measurement. I believe it was three point six that we added. And also, we added the word financial to one point two. So originally one point two read, develop a board oversight process. We put the word financial in there, and then we added three point six, which says provide necessary resources so that students identified as requiring intervention or receiving suggested levels of service. But this is the draft that I emailed out to you guys on Thursday. I didn't have any questions or any other requests to edit, so I'd ask that the board approve as presented.
Sign.
Motion by Tammy.
I'll second.
Second by Alec. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Most carries six oh, number nineteen, personnel.
Personnel, we mentioned personnel a little bit in closed session. I'm going to do B first, and that's the hiring of Ms. Chandler Hartnett. And there's your write-up from Mr. Fowler, I believe, she's going to do a great job for us. She, with your approval, she would begin work tomorrow, correct? So we're excited to add her to the district to fill the special position that Coach Kimmich left in his resignation. So I ask that the board approve the hiring of Ms. Chandler Hartnett.
So I'm... Was that Alec? Motion by Alec, I'll second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh.
And part eight, under personnel, I, I didn't do a lengthy write-up this year. I can't say enough positive things about Ms. Sedzuski and Mr. Fowler. They do an amazing job for our kids, for our teachers, for our community. As I said in closed session, any administrator that has survived the pandemic and kept their campuses open and their kids and teachers healthy definitely deserve at least a one-year extension of the contract. That's what I'm asking for, for both these wonderful principals. And I mentioned in closed session, well, I can't say what I mentioned in closed session.
You didn't mention anything.
So, but, yeah, one-year extension is what I ask for both principals, and we would discuss salary later on when we start to finalize our budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Make a motion?
Motion by Red to approve the administrative contract. Second by Scott. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Most carries six oh. And one more motion to adjourn, I will make that.
Okay.
Second by Scott, and everybody that wants to object can stay.